...thirteen. To begin, let's please all rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, first item on our agenda this evening is public input. We do have a member of the public this evening.
Sorry, please. Hi, Jason Grerett, 11 Perry Court. On October 22nd, up at the State House, a bill was introduced and discussed, which has to do with our regional planning commissions and the disestablishment of them. I forwarded to Russ the presentation that was given up there. I have a copy today to enter into the record. I'm sure Russ can forward the link to you. But it makes the case as to why... I mean, the title of it is Granite State Future and How It Bypasses Elected Representation, and how when municipalities join this and sign up, there's a whole litany of background information that you're signing up on to, and a bunch of unelected people then have input and control over a lot of things that come along with signing up with the RPCs. And so there's a good number of folks in New Hampshire that are very concerned about that. And there's a gentleman named Ken Earring who has spearheaded this in New Hampshire. I'm not sure how he gets all his time to do the diligence and dig up all of the background information and associated documents that go with it. But it's quite disturbing. So again, I've... It's 44 pages because it's quite thorough. I'm going to submit it for the record. You guys, like I said, if Russ would be so kind as to forward it to the members of the board so you can review it at your own leisure, but quite honestly, as a resident of Litchfield, it concerns me with... I mean, I'm not going to speak... Because I could speak for hours to it. I would just ask that you please do your due diligence as our local officials as to what we're giving up, what rights we're giving up when we do choose to allow federal agencies to appoint bureaucrats to be in charge of what goes on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Yep.
Can I ask a question as a member of the public?
Of course. Please take the mic.
Mr. Grerett, what do you find most disturbing about that report?
I find most disturbing that federal bureaucrats decide for what's best for us in Litchfield. They set up... When we decide to take federal money, just like any program out there, you take federal money to do anything, there are a lot of strings tied to it. And there's a lot of property rights issues that are determined. There's HUD, DOT. Again, it's detailed in the report. If, you know, one night you're having trouble sleeping, it's certainly good reading. And I'm no expert on it, but I've read it thorough and I don't have it memorized, so it's difficult for me to answer that specifically without saying something that someone can trump later on. But when you start to read it and understand what's going on, it's... I have a cynicism to anything that's led from the federal government to begin with because they don't understand the impact it has here in our town. This is our town, and I'd much prefer that all decisions are made here and not derived from someone that really has no reason other than to socially engineer or craft their idea of what our town should be.
Who was the report published by?
A gentleman named Ken Earring is the one that... He's from Moltenborough. Representative Jane Cormier is the sponsor of the bill from Alton. There are several of these that have been pushed back recently. There's the... There's one up in Goffstown that they defeated, a planning bill like... A planning organization like that. Wait, not Goffstown, Penardville. It was called Go Penardville or something like that. And I was just with John Burt in Merrimack. They're ready to push back on it also.
Push back on?
On the RPC, you know, whatever the... I don't know if it's the same one as the Nashville one. I think it's a different one up there, but...
And do they have an alternative to RPCs then?
Yeah, the local planning board, as it was designed in the state. See, the RPCs are... Is a level of bureaucratic...
They're also a huge resource, in my opinion.
Maybe so. Maybe so. I just... I'm not in favor of giving up local control to others trying to plan for our town. It's nice to have someone to point to, and I understand that. The problem is, is when you sign off into this program, there are volumes of information and regulation that is federally based that most people have no idea that you're actually signing on to. And again, it's all detailed in the...
I'll take a look.
Yeah, please do.
Thank you.
And I have sent a link out to the members here. Thank you very much, Mr. Grerett. Are there any other members of the public who wish to give comment or feedback to the board this evening? Hearing none. I will close public input. Next on the agenda, Lunandary Fish and Game Expansion. November 6th hearing in Lunandary. That's tomorrow evening.
I have the complete file if anybody's going, and I have this on the... Have the plan here now.
I'm not going to... I am going to try to make it tomorrow night for that.
I have a family item that'll trump my availability, but I'm going to make every effort to be there.
Then you got the address correct in the nose.
That's Town Hall.
Okay, let me just quickly show you this... Maybe work.
Head shop.
You might have changed the input, Joan. I was playing around with it. I left it on HDMI 4. I think you're plugged into HDMI 1.
How do I do? Well...
I can help you with that if you want.
I don't know. I just... It should... Oh, you were playing with the...
I was playing with it.
Yeah.
You can't leave a piece of technology around without me playing with it. This should be where yours set up into.
There you go. Just to show you what, you know, we'll be capable of when engineers bring plans in. This is the Lunandary Fish and Game Plan, so that, you know, everybody can see it at once. You'll have to see how it works out when the first plan comes in, but...
Yeah, once we get the workflow going on this display, it'll be very helpful.
Where it says... Okay, yeah, there's the... You see the camera? Here? And that's just like... So this would be Lund Street?
So you should be magnifying that too right after.
That's right. In fact, using it just as this kind of a...
How many homes are on that... In that area? Four butters? They're listed.
We have direct butters, but Lund Street's good.
The 10, I think? I think it's 10.
I saw the butters list.
Okay, you mentioned it, yeah.
Oh, you have a plan there?
Yeah.
Yeah, directed butters, but... There you go.
Guy, get it up there.
Here's the... Burgess Lund Street. Their access is right there on Lund Street.
Oh, thanks. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Nine directly.
It's a town-owned parcel.
Yep. There's like another name on this side of the street, so...
Yep. And within earshot, many more.
Oh, yeah, within earshot.
Okay, so, um...
Now, do these people know what's going on, or do they...
Well, if they're directed butters, they would cut them off.
That they've missed out on or something on the nose.
Like I said, I have the whole file with the letters, and if you want to take it tonight, you can look at it. Nice, I just wanted to show you how that worked.
Yeah, a few pages were scanned into the file upside down.
Yeah.
Hate when that happens.
All righty.
So I think it's important that the planning board have official representation at this hearing tomorrow. My availability is not guaranteed.
I should be back in town early enough to go, so I will plan on being there.
Okay, so either you or I will be the official... Either one of you guys planning to attend?
I will be.
Okay.
Make sure you wear your badge.
Oh, yeah. Are there any concerns that we should bring on behalf of the board? You guys have any particulars?
I mean, I can speak for the people on the street because I know the people on the street, and they're not happy about it, but, you know, like I said, I don't know. I don't know if there's really much that we can do, so...
I can at least make our voice heard.
If you want to share that, you know, that's the general consensus of the people on the street. But again, they're there. You know, I don't know what we can truly do about it, you know?
We can at least make our concerns known to the board in Lunandary and let them deal with it as they feel appropriate. Now, I have a few things I'm curious about that I'd like to learn more of. I don't see reference in the plan. I don't see any noise mitigation. At least nothing that I could tell is designed to mitigate any additional noise that would be created by the much, much larger areas available for firing. So it's a question I certainly want to bring to Lunandary with me tomorrow. And access to the site. God forbid something should go wrong, and with a much larger range, you have a much bigger potential risk.
I'd like to know why they don't have their own access into it from Lunandary.
I think they originally did, and if I'm mistaken, you may correct me on this, but they originally had access through Continental's quarry. And then Continental denied the access. They said, "No longer." So that's why they had to fire...
Well, then they went to court, and the court said, "You have to find an access for them." So this is the access that they found. They can't come in through Lunandary because it's wet and it's just you can't get that there from... Over that way. I don't know. I wondered if they have an emergency response plan because they are way the heck back there in the woods. Well, once you go in off Lund Street, it's not too bad. You follow the road in, but just to get to Lund Street, burning ambulance would be difficult, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the response team over there would be...
And if they were like on Litchfield to respond?
Because I don't know... I don't even know how that would work. If Lunandary would be toned out, or if we would be toned out as mutual aid, I don't know.
Yeah, and we...
I don't know if that would be even part of this application, but certainly is a good question because if Lunandary's toned... Lunandary's... I mean, Lunandary, I'm sure is aware that that place is out there, but you can't get there.
I know in the past, we've had a brush fire out there. We responded, but they toned us as mutual aid. So we beat Lunandary there because, of course, we're a town, and then Lunandary came in behind us. So I don't know if that's what...
I think Hudson, the ambulance would actually get there before Lunandary's.
Yeah.
Yeah, depends on where the ambulance... If it comes out of Central, yeah.
Yeah. And the other stations aren't much closer.
In the letter from Southern Regional Planning, they questioned a traffic study and if that would be appropriate.
Something's been asked.
Oh, yeah.
Noise is a big concern because I walk off Tanninger across the power line, and it's... You can, you know, concern...
Yeah, I live down near the high school. There's a considerable distance between my house and that range, and I can still hear it, to the point where if someone's firing something very big there... I was woken up out of a sound sleep one Saturday morning to the sound of a cannon or something.
Now, evidently, there's a police range out there though, too, somewhere. Mike, do you know anything about police range out there? Kevin?
I don't know.
I don't know exactly where it is.
Well, the police, are they still shooting down shaven holes in the gravel pit?
I... Yeah, I think that may be true.
Yeah.
I think like Joan said, the number one complaint is the noise, but again, how do you control that?
Yeah, and they're going to come back with the same thing they always do, is that it's not always them. You get people in the conservation land and the power lines shooting, and they have no control over that.
You can tell it's coming from up there. And now, when I did ask them in the letter, or via email, I guess it was, they can... They'll be able to simultaneously shoot at all the ranges at once. So I would imagine doing that.
And I know it affects the butters, you know, the people on Lund Street, but it's not all... Just like he was just saying, you know, that noise travels a lot.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, um...
Especially on a weekend before hunting season.
And the thing is, I mean, yeah, they're not going to add more members, but are they using bigger, more powerful weapons with this longer range?
Certainly offering the capability to, which creates more noise.
Here in the uphill battle we fight, it's not in our town, is it?
Right. I would like to see some noise mitigation in these new ranges.
So here's the file for... Come back, come back.
All right, so we will have representation of the board at the hearing in Lunandary tomorrow, and we'll be as well-prepared as we can be.
Yep.
Moving on. Future land use map. Review the final draft. Possibly send it to public hearing. Where'd I put that? I've got too many tabs open.
Jen, was the legend for the bike path and the gas line removed from the finished one?
Was it what?
The legend for the bike path and the gas line?
Oh, it's still on there. Actually, we have...
Legend is on there, but they...
Yes.
But it's not mapped on the map.
They are. We had a question on that. Those were part of the sets that you were working from and pulling from, but were not on the final sketch. And so we wanted to know whether that meant pull them off or keep them... Or were they just missed? So for now, we put them on here because they're easy enough to just remove.
Put your...
Shimmy over? You guys come in. Musical chairs.
You can't put a new piece of electronics in front of me and not expect me to play with it.
I don't think you're going to be able to work.
Are you putting some up there, Russ?
I'm going to try to, yeah. Thank you. Touchdown, this thing's terrible. Thank you. Wait a minute.
They were joking about trying to turn it 90 degrees so Litchfield will fit earlier.
So the legend that Tom was referring to is this here?
Yes, and we... For today, because we weren't certain whether these were part of... They were supposed to be part of the, kind of, the merged sketch that you had worked on and prepared at the last meeting or not. They're on here for now, but the question was, are they supposed to be on there?
Okay.
Because that was a follow-up as we were digitizing uncertainty.
They are useful features to include. How's the rest of the board feel? Should we keep those on the future land use map? Potential for bike path and gas line running along Route 3A in that corridor? See if we could mount it the other way.
I can start sending things rotated 90 degrees already, so you know, just going to look at it.
Or if we could expand the town outward to the east and west.
I'm sure Lunandary and Merrimack would feel wonderful about that idea.
Hear the sounds of Civil War.
I hear a motion to make Merrimack west Litchfield.
I think if we do put them on, we should at least label a couple of streets, like Albuquerque.
Yep, label some streets.
And maybe Pinecrest and Hillcrest, just as a reference.
Albuquerque... Pinecrest?
Yep, and Hillcrest.
Hillcrest?
That'll... Just give a reference to where you are in town when you're looking at it.
Okay.
Those little flowers on the bottom, trying to make them go away.
What are they?
I don't know.
Look, that's a signal that you get.
Yeah.
A signal strength.
Uh-oh.
Said he wanted to play.
Other than that, Jen, it looks good to me.
Okay.
Except for that bridge.
What do you think, Russ?
Yeah, I was very pleased when I saw everything fitting as we had laid out.
Jen, where will this go? I'm confused at why it says, "Send to public hearing."
I'm not sure why it says, "Send to public hearing." I don't know.
Okay.
I guess maybe it says so because one of the things we talked about at the last meeting was that because of future land use map, it's not a regulatory element. It kind of has some latitude for what you formally do with it. You can... If you wanted to formally adopt it, you could adopt it as an addendum or an appendix to your master plan. It just goes to kind of further the vision section or land use section of your master plan. So that would be one option. If you wanted to formally adopt it, then it would require a hearing as you would do for a master plan. Or you can just say it was a process document that you went through leading up to it as part of your information gathering for the zoning changes that you've been working on, in which case it wouldn't require a hearing. You just kind of say, "Great, we went through this process. It's not formally adopted. However, here's our future land use map that we came up with to help us make some decisions." So that... I think that maybe that's why we have the question. It's more whether you want... You know, that's... What direction you want to go with it as a end product.
Right, it's a tool to help us along the way towards...
Yep.
Getting a more defined map of the future of Litchfield. It's a visioning tool. It's not an official document. It's a work tool. It'd be hard to make it an official document with no solidly defined boundaries, just bubbles.
Well, I mean, that's more the nature of the visioning end of things.
Exactly.
And that's okay. So for a master plan, it's okay for it to be bubble-ish, to make up words because it is... It's thinking from the theoretical, it's those conceptual ideas. It's more vision as opposed to action.
Exactly.
Um, so then, no adoption, but perhaps added disclaimer at the bottom that this is not a formally adopted, or something to that effect.
It's a visioning plan, not a town document.
For reference only.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
That's the only thing I can see on.
I mean, I think it's basically incorporated as part of the master.
Yeah. It'll function good in that aspect when we get ready to tackle that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Moving right along? Moving right along, thank you. The zoning map. Draft boundary changes. Do I have the zoning map open yet?
There's a hard copy on the table if you want instead. See the larger.
Residential zoning, no.
Oh, I didn't put a link in.
No.
Okay, that's okay. Go up above. Click the CPG. I did load it, though, I believe.
Thing's here?
Yeah, go to the zoning map. I had to... Oh, I didn't post it. I had to compress the file, and I never went back and posted it. Sorry, you don't have an electronic version. I compressed it and everything so that you would. Um, you have a hard copy on the table. It's very large.
Tape it to the screen.
Am I going to get the staple gun?
It was, um... Originally, when it was exported from our GIS, it goes to 7 meg, so I had to... I had to compress it. Our GIS has some memory issues when it explores. So the solid color polygons are based upon the revised boundaries that you all drew at the last meeting. The purple fat lines, that's the current existing boundaries for each of the districts, just so you can have that for reference. The green fat lines is the ag overlay, and the brown fat lines are the multifamily overlay. So there is one area that we had a question on the ag overlay boundaries. If I can just hop up. And so it looks... When you look at it right now, it looks a little bit funny because in this area here, we followed actually the back of the property. Because in this area here, we followed actually the back of the property lines as opposed to grabbing the islands and the river. Um, because part of it looked like we were grabbing Merrimack. So. So that's why the green line comes here, because the, we actually need to get the river on top of the polygon. This here should be, we can mark this one up. This should be blue here. Because that's the river. This is the river here. Which is, the layers got misordered, it looks like, in the draft. Um, I believe that was, that was the one big question. I'm trying to remember if there were any other questions as we were digitizing. Just, um, it was more a matter of making sure we had the trace lined up correctly and recalling after the fact where exactly those lines went.
They'd get us in that one.
Oh, what do you think? It looks good to me.
It certainly captures everything that we had been working on at the last meeting. Looking at it now and a hard copy, those boundaries make sense to you guys?
Yeah.
Everything seemed to fit where, where we think it should fit?
Very good job, Jen. Tell the girls thank you.
Yeah. Anything else on the map?
I think that's, looks pretty good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pleased with the outcome. So moving on, um,
Now, it's it's just gonna go up for the, uh, hearing?
Yes and no.
Oh, good question.
Yeah.
No, that is a very good question. So, the map is only an illustration in your zoning ordinance. Um, the official boundaries are part of the ordinances themselves. So, um, ooh, that's a good point. So that's a change that is not incorporated in the non-residential yet. Um, so what we need to do is, if this is good, we need to make sure that the draft ordinances reference the correct district bounds. Um, and then this just illustrates what's in the ordinances. So it's the ordinances that, that would get sent, um, to the hearing, um, and then this would just get updated to reflect what gets adopted.
Be a lot easier for them to see this
Yes.
Than all the numbers.
All the numbers are, yeah, no, that's not even useful. I mean, if you asked me what my property, you know, parcel number was, I, I wouldn't, I couldn't tell you. Um, and I deal with parcel numbers on a daily basis, so. So no, so this is, in the end, this just becomes an illustration in the zoning ordinance. And what actually changes on that map is dependent upon what changes as a result of town meeting. Um, so, you know, the main thing is just to make sure that we have it digitized and have it available so that, like I said, you know, when you put this before our voters, they can actually see it as opposed to guess by parcel numbers.
Right.
Um, so ultimately, it's an illustration.
Yeah.
So, but that is a good reminder that we did go back and, and add the boundaries to the ag overlay draft and the multifamily overlay draft, but have not made those changes to the non-residential districts. The commercial, transitional, or commercial industrial. And those need to be corrected to reflect this, if this is good.
Yeah, I don't see anything wrong with it. I like, it looks like everything we wanted to get in there.
Pretty much. You guys would be okay living in Litchfield ten or twenty years down when it looks like that?
I'd just be hap, like, happy to be living twenty years.
Can't predict the future.
I have to say, in the end, the changes weren't huge.
No.
No.
It looked more, um, on trace, but looking at it like that, it's just little
It's, it's just
It's just shifting
Little bit here and there.
It's shifting things to follow property lines.
The same. I mean, it's, there was nothing
Yeah.
really changed.
Uh-uh.
We just picked up some areas that were overlooked basically before.
Well, and it's mostly just the, um, the boundaries between commercial transition and transitional and commercial industrial that shifted. There was, there was no new incorporation of residential into a non-residential. So it was just a shifting, a juggling amongst the non-residential districts in the end. If anything, I think there's a couple of areas that are converted to residential.
Is transitional still there in, intact?
It is, but it's in a, it's
Wider?
Um, at the northern, if you look at the southern end of town, that northern boundary between the non-residential districts and the residential, the transitional is actually bigger. The transitional came down into, I think, the commercial and the commercial industrial. The transitional, though, that separated the commercial from the commercial industrial was removed because it was creating a
In the south or the north?
The south, so. Because it was separating two already compatible uses. That was a thought, that it was just, it was trying to behave as a buffer. That's what we heard.
Mm-hmm.
And rather focused on just making sure that the buffer was in the ordinance itself.
Which we had changed.
But yeah, that's
That was changed.
Yeah, that was part of the, the drafts
The drafts.
languages that you had worked on, um, before. Was to just, if you wanted a buffer, create a buffer in the ordinance as opposed to a zone.
Okay.
So on to non-residential zoning revisions and site plan review regulation amendments? There's nothing they need to keep on the screen, huh? Yeah, if you want to play with it. You've got a
Yeah, that you can always settle with it.
Right there.
Yeah.
That's something you feel like you would want to display. It's actually pretty friendly to work with once you get the hang of it.
She has, she has some questions on the changes.
Good question. Are there any questions from the board about any of the changes to the, um, the non-residential zoning district ordinance?
It is quite lengthy, and I know we've spent quite a bit of time going through it back and forth.
Now, the, um, the boundaries for the revised zoning wouldn't be in here yet.
They're not yet, okay. I'm gonna go through and circle them all. I do have a flag on it, though.
Yeah, you've already picked up some of that, Jen, like on, uh, seven zero zero dot zero zero.
Yep.
You have the comment there to be reviewed and revised after the zoning map, so.
Yep. Yeah, I had, I had flagged it, but it's, it's time.
Um, Kevin said tonight he wants to work on setbacks. How much time does he have to do that?
Time's running out. Um, so logistically, talking about scheduling, um, the first hearing has, of anything, needs to happen in December. Your first meeting in December is the fourth?
No, third.
Third, okay. Um, I am not here on the third. I, um, either Jennifer De novo or Camille Patterson, uh, will attend in my place to cover for me. They are more than well-equipped to cover anything that is on the agenda and will not, they'll be like, you never miss me. Um, so, um, so just to kind of give you a, um, the background, Camille is, um, heads up all the land use programs um, for NRPC, has done this many, many times. And Jennifer, uh, she covers, similar to what the services you guys contract us to do, she does for Wilton and Mason, so.
So we'll be in good hands?
You'll be in good hands.
Very, very good hands. Both of them are very good.
Good.
Yes, exactly.
Worked with both of them before.
Um, and they may talk less. Which is not a bad thing. So, um, so yeah, so I mean, you can, that first December, first meeting in December, yes, you could do a hearing then, or you could continue working, um, however you felt you needed to proceed. Um, bottom line is just, we have the, to be able to hold a second hearing and meet all of your deadlines, um, the first hearing has to be at one of your two December meetings. Um, so just use that to gauge, you basically have, bottom line, you have two more meetings at which you could do some work. Um, the December third one, though, you wouldn't, wouldn't be able to do a lot of revisions at that point. It'd be more just a, kind of like a final sign-off
Yep.
on things, because it'd have to, um, get noticed almost immediately.
December seventeenth meeting.
Right, exactly.
Joan, Kevin has that pretty much in his mind, what he wants, right? So he can bring it up to the next meeting?
Is he still here?
No, he's not here.
No.
Yes, he has, um, like, he said sheds and, he doesn't mind if they would go to fifteen-foot setback and decks. I think housing, he didn't want to mess with. I'll have to check.
I can call Kevin and just get him on the, I think if, I just get him on the phone and get him to talk him, talk things through.
Right, then you can see where to put it.
Then I can get directly from him what he's thinking.
Yeah, and if it makes sense, we can get it on for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Other than that, the rest of it looks good. I mean, we've hashed it down and down, but This is, this is non-residential anyway, so it wouldn't be in this one.
It could be.
Well, yeah. I was gonna say, this one is the non-residential.
Correct.
So, I think most of what he has is the, uh, has to do with the residential.
Well, I think the setbacks are in zoning, though.
Yep.
Yeah.
So is there any input from the board members? Anything you'd like to see changed or clarified? Any questions or comments? There's a lot of pages to read through.
A lot of repetition.
A lot.
Yeah.
Just because there's the, um, there's identical language that repeats in each of the non-residential districts. Um, so it's, you just, you have to change it six times? Eight times? I lost count. I'm just thinking. Six.
How much could we tighten this up and reduce the number of, of repeating items?
That's part of, um, that's, that's part of the changes. So, um, refresh. There was some of the language that repeats, uh, verbatim, that it's, in this draft is proposed, pulled out of the individual sections and then placed in section four hundred as general requirements for non-residential uses.
So they're repeating it seven times.
So it, it says it once and then it applies to, just across the board, to all non-residential uses.
That'll simplify things.
But part of what you have in front of you, though, is you have to show the strikeouts for the six times it's mentioned. As part of the amendments.
Yeah.
For, I've, and this, this is something that, um, I would appreciate your direction on. Um, as you have it in front of you, you've got complete text. Because I thought that if I stripped it down to just the elements that were being, um, proposed to be amended, it lost context, um, of the bigger picture. Um, but the consequence is you have thirty-three pages in front of you. But there are not thirty-three pages of amendments. There's all of the, kind of the language in between. So... To a certain degree, I think some of it you can avoid. So, to the degree you want me to do, like I did, um, if you look on page one and two, there are places where I did some, the dot, 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 no amendments proposed, dot, dot, dot. I mean, I can do that in other locations. Um, and if you look on page two, I kept the headings. But then where the, the body would be, said no amendments proposed, so you at least knew what the headings were. Um, and we could go that approach as well. So that you maintain some context, but eliminate some of the pages.
Would it, would it make sense on the boundaries to put them all in one area? Or not?
I'd keep them the way you have them.
I just, just curious.
Yeah. It's easier just to, to keep the boundaries with the districts
Yeah.
directly. It's, um, when you're searching, as, as someone coming in and looking through the ordinance, it's more intuitive, I think.
Other than that, it looks, I think it's a good job.
Thank you.
We should probably put it aside till we get the updates from Kevin.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just work on those.
Okay.
Instead of going through the whole thing again.
Yep. If there's, if there's no concerns with what we have here at this far, I think that's a good approach. Yep. If there's, if there's no concerns with what we have here at this far, I think that's a good approach.
We might have moved from the exception of the.
If I can just hit a couple of quick questions?
Yes.
Uh, not, just a couple of spots where there's quick questions. Um, page eight. This was ju, this was a margin idea, um, at the bottom. Didn't know if you wanted to look at, um, a purp, more of a, kind of a preface or language or a purpose statement that, that kind of sets the intent for the district or the, kind of the tone. And this was just like a, this was just a sample. Um, that's just something that you could do. It's, bottom line, what it comes down to is it's more fluff, um, to be frank about it. But it's more kind of the fluff that helps the reader understand what the intent is, what the board's intent is.
It does get right up front, what, what's allowed, what's not allowed.
Yeah.
Large regional shopping type uses such as department stores are not permitted. That's very clearly spelled out, so you don't have to read any further and try to parse it.
Right, so you can kind of get the idea of what the, what the tone is that, that you're anticipating, and then you go down the more detailed list. It's just an option.
No, I like that.
Just flipping through to see if there's anything else that I had flagged. I did have, um, question.
Page twelve.
Page twelve.
Say, did the same thing.
Yeah, same thing. So if you like it the one time, I'll bra, I'll do similar, I'll draft something up similar for, um, each of the subsequent ones, and then you can.
Then our next meeting, we can get that plus Kevin's input.
Yeah. Just flipping really fast. One gen, general question, um, southwestern commercial. Which number was southwestern commercial? Seven hundred, page eight. Um, just one of the things I just wanted to double-check on this one. I think, I think we're fine, but just wanted to dou, you know, put it out there and double-check, uh, is, um, kind of that, how that interfaces with the ag overlay and the fact that a lot of your southwestern part of the town portion there is currently agricultural, agricultural, and so looking at that character and whether, um, this is co, this complements that char, that character. And again, I think we're fine. I asked, um, Kim in the office who was drafting the ag overlay to just to look at it and, and see how she, you know, how she thought it might interrelate, and she said, she, nothing jumped out at her. The only thing that, um, she flagged was the, um, uses allowed by special exception. Um, the, I, gas stations, automobile service, um, in particular, as not necessarily being compatible with having that next door to a farm. And that was the only concern, um, that she pointed out. And that's more just getting at whether there'd be contamination, how would that impact, um, produce, if it's growing?
Well, you'd think if something like that were to be developed, it would be held to stringent performance standards before it was ever allowed to break ground.
Yeah, but it's also in there, not including automotive service or gasoline sales. Under seven oh one point zero zero.
Right, but then they're listed as special exceptions. So that's a good point. Are we conflicting within the district? Yeah, that's existing language, so. So under seven oh three, they would be allowed by special exception.
Yeah.
And maybe it just means that under those, um, conditions for being granted a special exception, you add, um, a buffer to any residential or agricultural uses. I mean, I'm adding the residential, but the primary concern is the agricultural.
Yeah.
You mean, add it under special exception?
Yeah, so under seven oh three.
Yeah.
It reads a gasoline, so we'd add a seven under gasoline sales and a five under automotive service and repair.
Yeah.
Just to add maybe a buffer between the use and an agricultural operation.
The distinction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What would be an appropriate buffer?
Five hundred.
I don't know, would we use, uh, another portions of Arizona as buffer between those sort of uses?
Well, between gas stations has to be five hundred feet.
That's between gas stations.
Probably use that in this application as well.
Yeah. That was five hundred, so, Jen.
Restrictive.
Sounds very safe.
I mean, you know, you, you don't, it's a k, place where you don't want to take a chance.
This is true. I'm still thinking that, that by imposing rigid performance standards on the establishment, you would mitigate a lot of potential risk. That's five hundred feet, best number, or too much or too little?
Well, between the two, that'd probably be.
I think five hundred feet would be it.
Yeah.
What do you think?
I honestly don't know.
That's a run-out.
So I really can't say. I don't. It certainly sounds good, but.
Well, I mean, five hundred feet gives you a little room for containment if something happens.
It does.
You know, you, you don't want a case of a spill or something like that. You don't want to, you don't be able to control it and keep it out of that area. That's the only thing I'm looking at, is primarily a spill.
I know there is data out there that addresses, um, necessary or appropriate buffers based upon the actual s, understanding and stud, and the potential hazard and knowing how far contamination generally travels, um, underground. So I can do, you know, I can put five hundred for a placeholder and then, let's follow up and do a little bit of research to see if I can find what the, the general, you know, scientific standard is for a protective radius.
Yeah, please do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's use five hundred for placeholder.
Okay.
Until we have a, a better number, or if five hundred is the best number, we'll go with that.
Okay. Um, the only other questions were on the agricultural piece, not agricultural, aquifer. Um, and those are the last few pages. Just getting it, sorry, going backwards. You have in site plan, you have inter dis, inter-district buffer yards, which are, um, buffers required between zoning districts and end uses, and those range from twenty feet to a hundred feet under your existing regulations, as, again, buffers between the intensity of uses, so. Michael can probably speak a little bit more to.
I know, well, I know the Conservation Commission had mentioned, um, keeping fifteen percent for the non-residential districts. I don't, I think that was, they didn't want to change that. And I think on the, um, what's the other thing there? The definition. I know Jen had mentioned a third, you've made a third definition.
And, yeah, what you have in front of you is the third definition. That tries to address some of the feedback from the Con, Conservation Commission. It really.
One of the issue, yeah, well, one of the things had, had to do with, um, the infiltration of water and, um, the commission had felt that water was too, um, restrictive, I guess, and so they wanted to broaden it to sort of substances, um, stuff that can seep into the ground, so. Because there are other things. Do that, so, to change that, to reflect that, which is, you know, I mean, it's, you know, it doesn't really hurt anything, so. Just addresses it.
I think part of the concern, just adding to that, was that the, um, proposed revised, um, removed the discussion of regulated substances and instead just referred to whether water can infiltrate or not. And the important factor, um, for the Aquifer Protection District is to make sure that those regulated substances don't make it into the water. And so what I did was, using that feedback, took, um, and simply made a couple smaller changes to the, to the existing, um, to clarify that it's a modified surface, um, that can't, uh, impervious means it's modified surface that can't absorb or infiltrate water and through which, um, regulated substances cannot pass. So that covered both sides of it. Um, there was one piece in here, um, that just, from a scientific perspective, was inaccurate, um, and so that in, impervious surfaces, uh, include concrete unless unsealed cracks or holes are present. And the bottom line is that even if you have a few cracks and holes present, it does not guarantee that it's actually gonna be, um, pervious. So, that it is still, in effect, impervious. And therefore should still count as impervious surfaces. And the only thing, other thing I did is just added some examples of what impervious are.
Kevin had a question on, um, conditional use under twelve fifty-five B. We were calculating out what that, it says fifteen percent or twenty-five hundred square feet of any lot.
Right.
And he thought you should take out the twenty-five hundred. We had calculated what fifteen percent of an acre was, but I don't have my notes.
However, if you have a very large lot, um, fifteen percent of it could be significantly more than two thousand five hundred.
Right, right.
And so I think the two thousand five hundred was setting a, a bottom line for what should be.
Well, would it work if you had, I mean, a very small lot? Then you would need the twenty-five hundred, right?
No, um.
If you had, if you had, because it says of any lot, whichever is greater. So then you'd take the fifteen percent if it was a large lot.
Right. The point is whichever is greater, I suppose, the lesser.
So if you had a small lot, you'd have to use the twenty-five hundred, I guess.
Right.
So if you have a hundred-acre lot, you could cover fifteen acres. Round numbers.
Let's see. But if you had a one-acre lot.
It's like three thousand, I think. I think it was somewhere around three thousand.
Yeah. It's gonna, he's got a good point. So the question is, keep the or twenty-five hundred square feet, or just leave the or?
Straight percentage, or?
Have just a percentage, or?
And the question is, are you gonna keep the fifteen? Or go higher? Think about a big mall.
I can't remember the last time, when we talked to the Conservation Commission, what was the ration, I guess, what was the rationale, keeping it fifteen?
Because they didn't want to go with a higher percentage to impervious. Because, think about all that farmland in the south, it's big enough for a pheasant-laying mall. And even there's a piece, a hundred and thirty-acre piece on the east side of three A. So if you think about a big piece, twenty-five percent is gonna be a lot. But then that, Jen, that's where you said you could go f, uh, let's see, that is the conditional use permit.
Yeah. I think part of what, um, the Conservation Commission had flagged was that, one of the things the board had talked about previously was, um, keeping fifteen percent for residential, but allowing non-residential to go up to twenty-five percent as the baseline that was permitted. And so that was where the Conservation Commission was saying, no, don't increase it for non-residential, keep it at fifteen as well. So that was the feedback from the Conservation Commission. And so that's something that would then carry through again on twelve fifty-five under condit, conditional uses. So that, um, fifteen percent versus twenty-five percent for non-residential, that change would, um, be on page thirty-one and page thirty-two. The other piece was, um, that as part of your conversations, you had said to match, um, the area allowed as impervious. Um, under the conditional use permit to match the underlying zoning district, so that's what I had, um, drafted here. Uh, the original language said sixty percent, up to sixty percent for non-residential districts. Um, and the Conservation Commission said, no, keep it at, at the existing sixty percent. As opposed to, um, the sixty-five or seventy-five that was part of the underlying zoning district. So that was the other piece, um, to decide. To review feedback from the Conservation Commission.
I think, you know, keeping it uniform. And all sixty percent. Basically.
And this is just for the, the Aquifer Protection Districts, that those. Parts of the town that are. Undevoured. Even if the underlying zoning says you can do a whole lot more because it is aquifer protection, you wanna be more conservative from our approach.
Well, I think you wanna be more conservative, obviously you're dealing with our nat- our natural resource, drinking water.
Yep.
Uh, that's, that's key. And that's very important, so.
Okay, so Michael says keep it at sixty. What do the rest of you say?
Oh.
For all of? Uh. Keep it at sixty or sixty, sixty-five?
And the Conservation Commission is basing this on sound science and.
I would think so.
The best possible.
I think, I certainly think the Conservation Commission is looking out for the best interest of the trio.
That's what I would expect, too.
Yeah, I really do, um, so.
Okay. I.
Sixty.
Sixty it is, okay.
Yep.
Alright, keep. At sixty, alright, so the other, um. That's not a question mark, that's a percent, um, sorry. So the other question and, um, and, and feedback you had from the Conservation Commission was, um. What the. Um, base percentage is without the conditional use permit for non-residential. Um, existing ordinance says fifteen percent, um, you had discussed going, bumping that up to twenty-five percent.
Are we still talking in the Aquifer Protection Districts?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I, I mean, I think the fifteen percent is. Reasonable, but.
They are the Conservation people.
Uh, the. For me personally, um, my kind of professional opinion of the fifteen vers- percent versus the twenty-five percent, I think it's a very difficult decision. Um. The, the science out there. Has documented that beyond ten to fif- if you take a watershed and if more than ten to fifteen percent of your watershed is, um, impervious. That you start to see a degradation of your water quality. It's well documented, um, but that's, it's an average across your watershed, but generally. In order to apply that fairly from the regulatory perspective, that's where the ten to fifteen percent. Comes into play. Um, and just, everybody gets the ten to fifteen percent because then eventually if everything is built out, we're at ten to fifteen percent. Um. The flip side of that is from the, um. Development, the commercial development side of the conversation. You know, I've heard a fair share of testimony that it is very difficult to. Do commercial development within fifteen percent. Impervious. And that generally it does require a greater impervious area primarily because of parking requirements. Um, and being able to provide, um, parking to match what the regulation calls for. And so then you get developers that get caught in a catch twenty-two. So that's why for, for me and my professional opinion, it's very difficult, cause you got science that says one thing, but you've got the, the. Kind of the practical difficulties of. Putting together a plan, a development site plan that can, can meet those regulations is, is difficult when it comes to commercial development. That said, um, your conditional use permit, when it comes down to the science side of things, is very generous by going up to the sixty percent. Um, so, from that, that side of it, you've got, um, a very. Generous offering through the conditional use permit, um. So you're simply saying to applicants. We're more than willing to go above and beyond that fifteen. But here are some of the assurances we need in, in return to ensure that our water quality is protected. So that's.
That's.
The professional, the science and the planning. In a nutshell.
Very helpful, thank you.
So then the call is either fifteen or twenty-five.
I mean, I think, I think sticking with fifteen is, is fine. And, you know. I mean, they would have to make a case that it's otherwise, so.
Right.
And they're gonna have to, they're gonna make, have to make specific findings, so. I would, I would go to fifteen.
Okay.
But that's my, that's my opinion, you guys, if you guys wanna.
Agreed.
I mean.
Certainly.
Okay. So we'll leave it at fifteen.
And then if more than fifteen is needed, the conditional use permit process will. Be, uh, in play.
Okay. Okay, so, I mean, bottom line, really, all that's gonna happen then with the Aquifer District. Okay. So actually, let's, let's. So the only changes that are really left. After kind of going through this dialogue, is the, the sentence fragment added to the end of twelve fifty-four D. That says unless a conditional per- use permit is granted under section twelve fifty-five below. So that was one of the things that. Heard a lot of feedback that the Aquifer Protection District was too restrictive. But then we, you know, we went through it, we read through the Aquifer Protection District, he said, but there's the conditional use permit and it seemed that. No one was aware that that was there or an option, that folks stopped reading. Um, so that's where that sentence fragment came from. There's no other cha- other than the definition, there's no other changes proposed, so the question is, is it worth? Going forward with amendments, with these amendments that are. Other than the definition, really non-substantive. Or is it more important to say? Just to do a better job of letting applicants know what is actually allowed under the Aquifer Protection District?
But are you still gonna change the definition?
That's the question, do you, is it worth changing the definition?
When nearly everything else is left the same.
I mean, we, we can cer-
How much work do you wanna do to sell this?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there, being, to say, you know, is it worth having another item on, on the ballot? I mean, you certainly can, I mean, the definition is a very simple definition change, it just ti- tightens it up and makes it a little, little bit more scientifically sound. Um, and you've got that one claw, uh, one sentence fragment that's just added to clarify to folks to keep reading.
I think that one's important, that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you wanna.
Okay, so then we'll leave it, we'll, we'll still have the, the amendments proposed, but they're. Not very substantive.
Not a big set of changes.
Not a big set of changes. No.
That should be an easy sell, it's just some clarifications.
Have to keeping.
Yep.
Okay. Alright. Okay, so I need to get some input from Kevin on setbacks.
And I think it was mostly residential, what he was talking about.
Okay. I think he had some comments here though as well. So I'll just, I'll just double check and I'll try and just. Track them down and capture that and anything you have, anything else you had, I'll just make sure I have it for you for next meeting, so you have a chance to review it.
Thank you.
Um, okay.
Anything else on the non-residential zoning revisions? Alright, moving on, revised ag ordinance. Okay.
There's a second, there's an and to that agenda item. There's a zone.
Oh, and, site plan review regulation amendments, I'm sorry. Trying to move through the agenda too quickly. Well, is that the SP amendments from ten fourteen?
Yeah, that sounds right.
I've got a single page that just speaks to general standards.
Yes.
Okay.
These were just a couple of paragraphs that in the first draft of the non-residential. Language that we were looking at, they, um, there were a few things that the board had flagged as not appropriate for zoning, but maybe. For site plan, so this is just taking those maybes and saying what would it look like in the site plan? And, um, I don't believe that there was any kind of confirmation. When you guys looked at the, sort of discussed this as to whether to definitively move forward with site plan changes, it's just a look at what those items would look like. If they were on site plan. There were things that I. My understanding was that the. Decision wasn't com- complete. There was still discussion.
Yeah, I think.
We kinda gone, yeah, maybe it should go on site plan, but we'll discuss it more later, we, yeah, and it was just.
We weren't sure. Yeah.
And this is not something that would have to go to town meeting, so if you wanted to just say, mm, let's just see what happens with the rest of the regulations, we'll return to this at another point in time, that is perfectly legitimate. Approach to take.
I don't mind, uh, implementing what we've got here.
Yep.
What do you guys think, do you wanna set this aside for future discussion and, uh, come back to it later, or do we wanna, um, work to incorporate this as, uh. As part of our site plan going forward?
Or toss it out the window?
Or, yeah, ignore it entirely.
Which is a legitimate option.
Or we can just set it aside.
I, you know, personally, I prefer setting it aside, but, I mean, so.
Come back and work on it later.
Work on it later, you know, everybody's here, um.
Alright.
Maybe look at it a little more, I don't know. That's just me, but.
Yeah, I see the value to that. Get more eyeballs looking at it and we'll, we'll move on to other stuff.
So this is like setting it aside till next meeting, as opposed to next year?
Yeah.
Okay, just clarifying.
Before you know it, next year will be, you know, so.
Ah, I know.
Yeah, just a few meetings away. Right, true.
Alright.
Okay. Now we can get to the revised agricultural ordinance. The district boundaries would have to be defined and put in.
They are.
Do these match the, the map that we were looking at earlier?
They should.
Okay, good.
I'll double check them. Um, yellow highlights flag anything that's, um, amended since the last time. It's not a lot. It was, um. Just overview, uh, of what the yellow highlights are, um. After. Digitizing the boundaries, looked at what the underlying zoning districts were, are, what the underlying zoning districts are. Um, and what the potential overlaps could be, um, and recognized that. If you had, uh, for the development standards, it wouldn't necessarily just be residential. That could be, uh, an application and that would fall into the overlay, the ag overlay, and so. Just making sure that the overlay is drafted acknowledges that it wouldn't necessarily be residential and didn't restrict it to just being residential. Um, so made sure it had some language to refer to non-residential standards. Actually wasn't. Kept it really simple and basic, just generally referred back to the underlying district.
Yep.
And the open space standards as set forth here. The board had also asked that we follow up with a couple of farms in town, just to get some feedback, um. Heard back from one, and there was, um. Particularly the conversation about the list of permitted uses, whether it was onerous or restrictive as drafted, and there was no, um. Conflicts identified, it, they said that, um, they could foresee that anything that they currently do or might do in the future. Um, would be permissible under the list of permitted uses. Um, and there were no concerns that were, uh, um, that arose relative to best management practices.
Good.
Believe those were the two items that the board had specifically flagged.
Right, mm-hmm.
If you're interested, get more information.
Under, um, permitted uses under H. I think you did have a pretty lengthy conversation on that, but I can't remember, did that not include processing of animals?
That's right, we did have some discussion about that.
Not really clear, it looks pretty open-ended.
Yes.
But if, if you go into the definitions. For agricultural processing plant, it excludes slaughterhouses and animal processing facilities.
Okay.
That's where we thought it.
Yeah, okay.
Right, and that was part of the conversation that Kim had when she had a, her one phone call follow-up. She only had one person get back to her. But she did try and get ahold of several, or actually all of the farms that she had met with initially, she tried to, but it's. Extremely busy point in the year.
Yeah.
So. Perhaps give him another few weeks and.
Things were quiet down.
Things were quiet down. Things were quiet down.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd seen the blog entry by a, uh, a farmer, um, asking, you know, if he knew, if anyone knew of any towns where he could put a poultry processing plant.
Is that local?
I, I don't recall the specifics now, I'd have to look it up and reread it. And I remember seeing that and thinking, not Litchfield, we talked about this.
It was one thing that came up as a, from one of the challenging sides, um, of being the livestock business that you'd raise your livestock, but you'd have to send them somewhere else to be slaughtered and then send them somewhere else to be packaged. And there was a lot of shipping associated with it that made it, um, more difficult as a business. From that side of it.
But that's not a new.
It's not new.
It's been, been done for centuries.
Well, there's only one left, one or two left in New Hampshire, I think one slaughterhouse left in New Hampshire.
Heard there's some.
There's a second, there's a second one that wants to go in, in, uh, Gloffstown, right next to Le May's. And it was interesting because the people were up around, up in arms about it, but didn't even know that Le May's was there, it was a slaughterhouse. And it's in their backyard.
Yeah, it's been there forever.
Yeah.
So, is there anything else we want to do with the agricultural overlay?
No, I think it's ready to send it up to the public hearing, seems to be.
I, I would say before, before voting to s- to say, send it to hearing, perhaps send it to council?
It's a very good suggestion.
Yeah, I would recommend that.
Little details. Okay.
Nope, we just need the chairman to make the request.
Yeah.
We can send it to council.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Call delegation duty.
Chairman's prerogative. Moving on, multifamily housing overlay.
Focus it.
Oh, that's, um.
No, because, yeah. Yeah, it was just the, the boundaries.
The process within the residential district and. Within the residential district and.
Yeah, that's a mis- General five twenty-five dot O two.
Yes.
A.
Yes.
Doesn't sound right.
No? Okay.
That's all residential parcels in town?
No, north, that, all parcels within the resident. You should say that are.
Okay.
Instead of and, that are. So, um, all parcels within the residential district north of Leechbrook.
Right, just take out the end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that ma- that makes a lot more sense.
Okay. That, that doesn't even need that are, so all parcels within the residential district north of Leechbrook.
Yeah.
Okay. B is also the portion north of Leechbrook, but there were only, um, four parcels that were not residential.
Yep.
But north of Leechbrook. Those were called out individually. Um, the part C, um, this one, I do have a question. As drawn, um, at the, and this is actually a going back to the zoning map question. Um, as drawn at the last meeting, the way the boundaries were drawn for the southern portion, it incorporated all, the, kind of the outline you drew incorporated all parcels, um, east of three A, south of Page Road, and north and west of the Hudson Town Line. However, that also included, that includes within it the commercial industrial district. And I know in the past you, um, had felt very strongly about not, um, allowing multifamily within the commercial industrial district just because of the incompatibility of, the potential incompatibility of uses. So, in C here, I stated all parcels within the residential transition and commercial districts within that perimeter and excluded the commercial industrial, but needed to confirm that because we'll need
Yeah.
to modify the way it's drawn on the map.
Yeah, we had, we had discussed that, I think that's the way we wanted to go, this way.
Okay.
On, um, B, should you put in twenty-two thirteen, which is a town-owned parcel?
Which one?
Twenty-two thir- twenty-two thirteen under section B.
Yeah, what was, what was it that you just said?
It's a town-owned parcel.
It's a town-owned parcel. It was part of what was drawn on the map, but, but we can, we can move that line.
Unless the town is interested in selling to a developer.
No, I don't think so.
So should that be removed?
Um, I guess you could leave it there, it wouldn't hurt anything, but I don't envision it ever going anywhere.
I, I see no harm in leaving it since the development potential as a town-owned parcel is none. It just keeps the, the map from having more pockets in it.
A big jog, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You should also send to council.
Very good observation.
It looks good.
Yeah.
We have that hill down there, two more parcels.
That's all?
Yeah. Could you also send that to council?
Okay.
Please.
Yeah, please.
You're the boss. You don't have to say please.
And thank you.
But it's nice.
Wow, we're cruising through our agenda. All we have left is to approve, um, the, the minutes from, um, October fifteenth.
That's gonna take time, no, we have to do the time sheet.
We do.
I kept track of it all, but how would you put in ten minutes, five minutes?
Oh, all right.
Ten minutes, you round up to two tenths of an hour, five minutes, you round up to one tenth of an hour.
No.
What?
They do it in quarters, point two five, right?
Really?
Yeah, you don't want to drive them to crazy.
What time did you start on the project?
Seven twenty-five, the first prod, the first one was ten minutes, future land use map.
What was the zoning map?
Ten minutes.
Non-residential?
Forty-five.
An ag?
Ten.
Wow.
And multifamily was five.
Multifamily doesn't count.
This is the first meeting where I haven't watched the town.
Cause it's not part of that scope of work, I mean, you could count it, but it's not part of the scope of work.
Okay.
Um.
I thought you weren't gonna go with multifamily this year.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
It showed up on the agenda, so I thought I'd talk about it.
It's good.
Okay, well. Yeah, cause I remember we said, well, we weren't gonna do that, this, um.
No? I misunderstood.
No, that's what, that was the impression I got.
It's gonna be extremely overwhelming as it is.
I know. I mean, that's your call. If you wanna hold it.
Decide next week, decide next week and everybody's here.
Future land use.
I don't mind continuing the, the discussion about it, you know.
Whether or not you move forward with it and put it on the ballot, it's a whole separate, yeah, you can.
Yeah, I mean, you could do that, discuss it, I mean, I'm not saying can't do that, but.
You can hold it.
And, you know, four or five years down the road, when it does appear on the ballot, it'll be exactly what the voters will support because we'll have had all that time to beat it to death.
Uh, so, so are you saying you want to put it on the ballot this year?
Four or five years down the road.
I think it's soon.
So we're gonna have four different ones.
Oh, yeah, getting back to the timesheet.
Three different ones, future land, agricultural, and update zoning.
Yeah, so how do you write that?
What I would recommend if you're gonna do fifteen-minute increments, it's not the end of the world if you, um,
put in five minutes extra.
Well, yeah, you, well, what you could do is, it's the total that counts.
Okay.
Um, but the task, it's not as critical.
Right.
So if you go fifteen, fifteen, thirty, fifteen, it's, it's fine, the total's the same and it, it's the task, they're just looking ballpark.
Okay, so future, future land use, we're gonna do fifteen?
Well, you could do thirty and forty-five, cause you have.
Well, future land use map, zoning map, and ag, they're all separate tasks.
But it doesn't do the same thing? Okay. So make them all fifteen?
On the, on the scope of work, so just go, if you go fifteen, fifteen, thirty, fifteen,
Oh, okay.
you're fine.
So future land use, we did what, zoning map?
So future land use is task one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Zoning map is task four?
Yep. And those each get a quarter of an hour allocated to them. As well as commercial zoning, and then agricultural gets, uh, point five hours, do I?
So the commercial was, yeah, just say half an hour.
That's all.
And then the ag, fifteen.
So what do we got, three, right?
Commercial's three.
Two, five.
Three or four?
And point five.
Commercial is two? Task two?
Commercial is task two, yep.
And then.
Ag is task three?
Yep.
Yeah, so we have one, two, three, and four.
We got four.
So point two five, point five, point two five, point two five? Okay.
Point two five, point two five.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just, I was retarded, I'm sorry.
We'll put one and put one point two five.
Okay.
Planning board meeting done.
And, and non-residential is point three oh, or?
Pardon?
Point three oh for non-residential?
Well, point five, half hour.
Point five, point five. Yeah, okay.
Important thing is the bottom line is one point two five hours.
One point two five, okay.
Yes.
And we're in November, make sure you're on the right tab.
Right. That's a good question.
She needs to know.
So, so the multifamily, are we sending that to council or not?
Two five.
You said to send it.
I'd say like send it to council, get council's input on it.
Okay.
That way we'll have it in our pocket, it makes sense to bring it forward at deliberative.
Okay.
Or we'll have recommendation from council of where we need to improve it.
Okay.
And then we can set it aside and come back to it next year.
Or maybe, maybe it would be good to send it all, everything at once, I don't know.
Yeah, let's see what council says. If council thinks it's, it's a, a good document.
And I wonder if you can also ask them how much do they think that you should put on the ballot?
Yeah, okay.
If that's a fair question to ask them, I don't know.
That's, it's really dependent on how well we can present it.
Well, how the questions are structured too.
Yeah.
Who's gonna be our human sacrifice to deliver that message to the voters? Who catches the raw tomatoes that day?
I think it's also worthwhile, um, while it, well, you don't want to have too much on the ballot because it, it can get overwhelming and then you just, what the heck are they doing?
Vote no to everything.
But on the other hand, by breaking things up, you do give the voters the opportunity to keep what they like and say no to what they don't like, um, so.
Well, you almost have to have separate questions for, like the ag and the zoning and this.
Yeah. I would say the ag would have to be its own piece, the, I think the non-residential, um, because they're all linked and it's the same change times six, I think that you can lump together, um, the aquifer I would do separate.
And the zoning map, the zones.
The zoning map is just, the zones are just part of those.
As part of the non-residential.
Part of the zoning question, so the zoning map would not be a ballot item because that's the boundaries in, so you'd have, the zoning map piece would be in the ag, that piece, that discrete piece of it would be in the ag ordinance. The non-residential districts would be within that ballot item.
Yeah, that brings a good point. When it comes time to present this,
Yeah.
we should be, um, cognizant of the need to separate these maps out, or have one big map with colored blobs keyed to each individual, uh, warrant article. So warrant article, blah, is this color on the map, so you can correlate easily between what you're voting for.
I don't think you're gonna have that much though. You're gonna have, you've got the non-residential, which is those six districts, um, you've got the ag piece, you've got the aquifer piece, and then maybe multifamily.
Well, and transitional changes.
That's part of the non-residential.
Okay.
Right.
So, I mean, that's not, that's not too bad.
And if you put multifamily in, it would be its own separate question.
Right, multifamily would definitely be a se- it's a separate question.
Its own warrant, its own color on the map.
The ag ordinance would be a separate question, so.
But we can also do the map as a handle.
And we should, we should be prepared to have a stack of those.
A color map as a handle?
Hmm?
A color map as a handle? Yeah?
Do we want to color or?
Whose butt did you take?
Well, I mean, it doesn't have to be color.
We, we could probably do some.
It doesn't have to be, you know.
Not big, no.
No.
Remember, we have, um, we have some funds set aside to prep for town meeting
Yeah.
and prep, um, products for town meeting, so. I mean, that's still available, yeah.
Can you have people there, planning board members, there the day of the vote, outside?
Picketing?
Not, not picketing.
That's what you say, right?
No, no, like explain, I know you, you probably couldn't be in the hallway outside the doors, you'd probably have to be outside of, so if people coming through had questions.
Set up an informational booth.
Yeah, information booth would be great.
Outside, I don't.
Outside of the.
You'd have to be outside there. Yeah.
Yeah, like the moderator would let us that close to poll.
No, I don't think so.
That'd be like a candidate being inside the building.
Right.
Right, right, so you'd have to be out by where the candidates are.
Do we want to go through the minutes from ten fifteen now? Are we ready to move to that? And that's the file that says the real minutes, ten fifteen?
Yep.
Okay. There's an upload error.
I got, finally got them in.
That made me giggle.
Yeah, Google Sites and I are still learning.
They look good.
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held on October fifteenth, two thousand thirteen.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero one. Thank you. And finally, um, the last item on the agenda this evening is any other business.
Yeah, follow up on. Alternates for the board?
Um, I have dropped the ball on the action I said I would take, and I need to get on to that. To uh. Host. A. An ad on the cable channels looking for alternates.
Have you heard from um Steve Perry at all?
Steve, I have also dropped the ball on that action as well, I need to reach out to Steve. Sorry, guys. I blew it as chairman this time.
You mean you have a life beyond here?
No, it's all work.
Did you wanna mention the invitation from the ZBA?
We did receive a, an invitation from the zoning board to uh appear before them at their December fifteenth meeting?
Let's see, it must be December.
The meeting in December.
Eleven.
The second Wednesday.
Eleventh, I see it on the calendar. They had some concerns expressed by their chairman regarding uh some of the survey results that we've received. I will make every effort to attend that meeting and um answer their questions.
Unfortunately, I will be off at another meeting that night.
What day is that?
That'll be December eleventh, it's uh second Wednesday in December.
Wednesday.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
So, I'll let uh Mr. Riley know that you'll make an attempt to be there.
Yeah, please let him, let him know, if he has any other concerns in addition to what he stated. Uh, have him, send him to us as an email and, and I'll be prepared to answer their questions when I arrive.
Okay.
Where are we, our next meeting will be two weeks from today, November nineteenth, at seven PM. If there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion.
Ma'am?
Oh, yeah, well, reopen public input.
Thanks, Russ.
Uh, just cr- to, I'm sorry I didn't get a, an agenda before, otherwise I'd have asked it in the first public input. With regard to the uh London Dairy Fishing Game expansion and the noise.
Yeah.
I mean, I live very close by on the north end of town and quite honestly, the folks that I talk to. You know, believe, we live in New Hampshire and it's, while we certainly hear it and every now and then there's, you know, a cannon going off. It, it, it's, it, it really doesn't bother, I mean, there are folks that it really bothers and then there's folks that really don't care, so. I think that should be equally weighed, I mean, I understand people don't like it, but some people really don't care. And may, like myself, believe that, good for them, you know, they've got their own thing going on, it's a membership, it's a club thing, it's, you know, whatnot. Quite honestly, for me, what's more annoying is the constant noise of motocross racing. Now, I used to race motocross and so I, I, I'm not averse to it, but what I'm saying is, that's far more. Uh, disturbing than is the gunshots, which are sporadic, you know, it's pop, 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 pop. Whereas, you know, the big four-stroke motors that are running four hours straight is far more disturbing than any, than any gun range. Um, and to make it, um, uh, to, to mitigate the noise in a gun range like that, the distance that they wanna go makes no bearing. There's no bigger gun than they can shoot there, they shoot them now, they just wanna be able to put a target further out, you know, and, and sight it out further is the point, so. They shoot the same guns, they make the same noises, the, the length of the range is more for, you know, for different fun. You know, I can shoot a thousand yards instead, or, you know, however long they're gonna make it. Um, and then, you know, to put berms up to, I mean, that's the only thing you can do in an outdoor range is put berms. Um, and really, that's not going to impact the noise here at all because we're still, you know, we still have housing. Um, it's not like Texas where you can put it out in the middle of nowhere and really there's nobody to, nobody to hear it, right? And that, you, I, I was sat there confused a minute ago when you said, yeah, I saw the multifamily housing on the agenda. It, it sounded like you didn't know it was on there, and so I was like, well, who's making the agenda but the chair?
Oh, I, I knew it was on there.
Is that a good joke?
Oh. It's, it's been on there.
I see.
Yeah.
I, 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 cause it sounded like you don't make the agenda, someone else made it, I was like, man, Russ has got some great sense of humor, but I just wanted to make sure you're the guy who's doing the agenda.
Yeah, I guess I should deliver it with more of a smile.
No, it's just, you've got that great, great flat sense of humor and it just floored me, but, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Motion to adjourns.
Thank you, I have a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries four zero zero, meeting's now adjourned, have a good evening, thank you for joining us.